Yes, sir.
You were quoted in the press talking about Senator Ball upstate, downstate. The downstate, you know, people shouldn't tell us what to do. Are you in support of Senator Seward's home rule bill?
Here's what I believe. And sometimes the press doesn't print everything that you say to them. I support environmentally safe drilling.
Do you support Senator Seward's home rule?
I don't know what his home rule bill is, but let me think.
It's going to allow local communities to decide for themselves whether they want hydrofracking.
No, I don't.
You don't support home rule?
Let me finish my statement.
Okay.
Because you got the camera, don't get carried away. The DEC will determine scientists, geologists, experts, not politicians who don't know the first thing about geology, or drilling, or making up things, but the scientists, the experts will. How many are here to talk about just other stuff? We've got about 50/50. All right, what would you like to... Let me just give you this. What would you like to deal with first?
Flood.
Flood?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Who wants to start? Can I just ask who this gentleman is with the camera?
Oh, me? Bill Houston.
Okay, and are you with the media?
Sure, yes, sure.
Oh, okay, nice to meet you. I've never met you before.
Yeah, Channel 4, Public Access TV.
Great, great.
Time Warner.
All right, get a good shot. My mother watches.
I'll make you look beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
Senator, can you tie the issues together?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Can you save us from higher taxes for cleanup, for roads, for bridges, et cetera, et cetera?
Okay, when you say "save us from higher taxes," talk to me what you mean. From the state's side?
From the state's side, can you encourage local government? We can't take all of it.
I understand, I understand.
And it is tied together.
There are things we can do on the state's side, okay? And we're actually looking at a number of options. I can't encourage your local government or the people you elect at the local level. You have to deal with them locally. You should be very candid about it. It's like when I was a city councilman, when he was in the city of Binghamton, I didn't want Senator Anderson interfering with what I was doing, or whatever. But we are looking at a number of things on the state's side. Right now, we're still assessing damage. Remember, the problem that we have and that we're facing right now is that in '06, Brum, Tioga, and Shenango counties got flooded. We have, I think, 15 counties that got hit with the various storms, and many of them got hit as bad as, believe it or not, you all did, with flash flooding. Homes were wiped out, knocked off. So we're looking at this from a broader perspective right now. All that means is the costs are coming in. We're working with the local governments to try to figure out, you know, buyout issues and all those options. We're also looking at dealing with, you know, school passes. Obviously, if you're out of your home, we've got... We were able to get them to relay it to, you know, payments until 21st of October. But we also understand that there are people who are in situations where we walk away from their homes, and those are going to be issues that we're going to have to deal with. There's no silver bullet. I'm not here to pretend that there is, but we're going to try to help you in every way we can from the state's side. Yes, sir?
In this very room just last night, 24 hours ago, our town board voted to suspend the 2% tax cap that you say is such a great thing that you enacted for the whole state. They voted to this...to avoid that for next year. And they're proposing, their initial preliminary budget shows a 22% tax hike for the town of Ouego for next year. Now, that's a preliminary number, and we know that they're going to be heroes when the real number comes in at 11. But it's still a long way from 2%.
That's why we passed a 2% tax cap.
And what I'm saying is it didn't do a blooming thing.
Well, it did.
It didn't do a blooming thing for us taxpayers.
No, no, it did, because we put an option in there. If town officials, if 60% of the town board voted to suspend it, they could do it. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, because again... Could I ask everybody to just... I will admit, you have some interesting rings.
Everybody needs to turn their phone off.
Let me go back to you really. When we passed the tax gap, it was looked at, from my perspective, as a disciplinary item, because everywhere I go, Tioga, Shenango, and Brum, those are my three counties, all I've heard for the last four years, property taxes are choking us, property taxes are choking us. So we worked with the governor, and we put together a plan that we thought was a good plan, that was going to do a 2% tax cap, that would force school districts and local governments to maybe look at how they do things. Now, it's working in 90 other percent. I don't know of any other local town in my district that's overridden it.
Vestal already has.
Vestal did too?
It would be very interesting to point out how many schools, or how many towns have already overridden it.
I'll check it out. I'll check it out. But that's their...by law, that's their option. And that's why you elect local officials, to go and tell them that this stinks.
We told them, but it doesn't make any difference.
Okay, one at a time. I'm pretty good at hearing several people. You did.
And I assume that the schools could do the same thing. So what was the reason for it? I mean, it was promoted as such a good thing, and as taxpayers...
Well, it is a good thing, but if your local officials, if, like, you're questioning me, you should be questioning them and remember at reelection time what they did. You know, I'm hoping people will remember at reelection time that I want a cap property taxes, that I'm trying to help.
Well, make it stick. Don't give them an option.
Yeah, why was that option put in?
Why was the option put in?
Because it would have got passed.
It's the only way we got... Who said that? Absolutely right. It's the only way it would have got passed. Because there were people who wanted to do nothing, nothing. They didn't want to do any cap. So what we have to do often is compromise. So we had to put an option, we had to compromise. And so the way I look at it is, what we have in place is better than nothing. Because there are a number of places that will abide by it. Now, what's that, sir?
It's not better.
Well, I think it's...
I can't vote myself a raise.
Listen, I appreciate your concern, and I understand if I was a resident, I'd probably be upset with my town board, and that's where you need to focus your energy.
Well, I want you to know that from a state perspective...
Sure.
Every unfunded mandate that you send down to the towns...
Right.
Raises my taxes.
Right.
And we've got to stop these unfunded mandates.
That's right.
Blanket.
Right. I ask people, and I won't ask you or put you on the spot, but I have said to the towns or whatever, other than pensions, we know that's an issue, and we're going to deal with that this year, "Give me a list of your unfunded mandates, we'd be happy to work with you on." And I very rarely get a list. I very rarely get a real list. I told the school boards, or the school districts, that same thing, April and all, "Give me a list, let me work on them." Well, they did give me a list, and I found out that 80% of the mandates on them were from the border regions. They weren't legislative mandates. Let's go over here. I want to be fair, so everybody has a shot, go ahead.
It seems like that law was passed basically to get the heat off the state and put it onto the government.
Yep. No, I think it was passed because property taxes kept going up and going up, and people, like the people in this room, that I read...
I knew we were hearing complaints from everybody, and so, okay, let's get our part asked and put it on the public space.
Okay, so if we did do a tax cap, it wouldn't matter anyway, because your taxes would still go up.
Exactly.
Yeah, but it's working in some places.
Because they don't leak the water.
It's working in some places. I saw it.
Over here. Over there. Over here.
Yes, sir.
Mom Andrews from Ouego.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't affected by a flood, but my daughter lives on George Street, and she had 37 inches of water in her first floor. I've been going hot and heavy since September 8th, and I got a break last week because my mother-in-law passed away.
Yes, sir.
But here's a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, I use a phrase, and it may be unjustified, it may be wrong, is the fact that flood is its mother nature, telling the people, "Village of Ouego, Tioga County, this place is dead, move out." I know that that could be unfair, but the question to you is, from a state level, what are we doing to bring jobs and industry into Tioga County? I come from southwestern Pennsylvania over the weekend, and they're knocking down slade dumps and building new hotels in the county.
Why are they doing that?
I wasn't there long enough to ask.
Natural gas drilling.
Well, no, no, the hotels were there before the natural gas. But they're knocking down and building office parks. But I see, and I could be wrong, maybe I didn't read the right newspaper or listen to the news, but I don't see no effort, and I'm just as blameless as anybody else, I mean, I see no effort to bring new industry into this county to give people a reason to stay. Now, what are you doing? What is the state doing to correct it?
Why should that be Senator Lewis's job?
I'm asking what the state is doing.
Let me try to answer your question, okay? I believe that when I voted for the tax cap, that would be a good start, because if people find out that property taxes are high in an area, they don't want to come there. Okay? Number one. This year, in the state government, unlike the federal government, we had a $10 billion deficit. We closed it. We closed it by cutting spending. And believe it or not, for the first time in the history of the state, not one new tax or fee, not one. No additional fees on different things that they've always done. We actually eliminated that one tax this year. So why was that important? We cut the budget, and we did a number of things that were real, that weren't fake. Why is that important? Because that begins to send a message to those businesses and other people that we'd like to bring in here that were serious. And I got to tell you, Governor Cuomo's been great to work with, because at least on the fiscal issues, he understands what needs to be done. We had a conversation with the governor yesterday about dredging the rivers, and we'll get into that in a minute, because I said to him, "There's a number of things beyond looking at financial stuff that we have to try to help everybody with, and get devastated with a flood, whether it be talking about buyouts, or what FEMA's doing, or other things." But to prevent or to minimize where we go in the future, I said, "We've been talking about dredging for a long time. We always get a lame answer from the Army Corps and our federal representatives, 'Well, you know what? There's a lot of islands that are out here that I didn't see 30 years ago or 40 years ago.'" And I think the time has come where something needs to be done effectively, and the governor and I had quite a long conversation about it yesterday. So putting that aside, the tax policy, the tax structure, not increasing taxes, paying off a deficit by not borrowing, we didn't borrow anything this year, we believe that that was a beginning and a start. Some people probably don't agree with me, and we'll have that debate in a few minutes, but I happen to believe that environmentally safe natural gas drilling is something that could be positive for the state.
Not everybody's going...
Until you have...
I have a daughter that's not going to be a rigger on the gas.
You're right, you're right, you're right. Would she be a truck driver?
And also, wait a minute, wait a minute. I was in southwestern Pennsylvania, they're going balls out drilling. And I'll tell you what, you couldn't get a hotel room because of all the out-of-state gas drillers. So that's another thing, too. It's going to bring in a lot of jobs, but it's going to bring in a lot of out-of-state jobs, too. But not only, you know, I don't want more shell-to-shell...
Don't they spend money when they come in?
Yeah. I don't want more shell-to-shell to be the answer. What else are you doing to bring in industry? We can't...
You're right, sir, you're right, you're right. But it's a good start. It's a good start, and what we're doing, we're setting our tax policy and making sure that we're not borrowing, we're not taxing, we're not spending. And the governor has committed going into next year's budget for no taxes. So we're trying to set up a structure in the state where companies are going to look at us. And I'll tell you what, and I know this is history, and history is what it is, when Pataki was governor the first four years, and we did the same thing, and we cut personal income tax, we did a whole host of things, it actually produced companies looking at us and coming in and expanding. So we've got to set the table first, before we can go out and offer anybody anything. Just offering them cash and grants, I don't think that's the answer. They got to want to come here because we have a good structure, and that's what we're working on. I'll come here, and then I'll come back here. Yeah, I'll come back, yeah, I just want to... Yes?
Thank you for coming yourself instead of sending a representative. The short-term solution may be dredging the rivers, I understand that, but I think the long-term solution is addressing 390 parts per million carbon equivalent, CO2 we send into the atmosphere, bringing it down to 350 parts per million, because climate change, 2010 was our...the global highest year for droughts and floods, and we witnessed one heavy year of floods in five years. The long-term solution is bringing that...keeping those fossil fuels on the ground. I respectfully disagree with your safety, hydrofracking.
And I respect your...
And I want to go toward renewables and green jobs in this area.
We are doing just a lot of renewables and green jobs. I mean, we disagree on hydrofracking, and that's...we'll leave it at there for now. But we are doing a lot of the other things, too, and we're actually, the state is giving a number of incentives for different types of energy and options.
On that, the incentives are about to expire. I don't know the bill number or anything, but can you do something about that?
We can check if you would...I have a number of staff members. If my staff would just kind of raise their hand a little bit, okay? And they'll check with you. Another hand up over here. Sir?
My name is Don Fontana. I live at Marshall and Rowe, 1329. I'd like to have some discussion about the flood. Number one, just to give you a little bit of background, I'll make it as quick as possible. My house was built in '68. It's been flooded three times, '05, '06, and '11. We get very little support from the area on this. We've heard a lot of talk about dredging the river, and that's all we've heard, basically. That's number one. Second thing we'd like to hear about is some buyouts. We've been flooded majorly, twice, in five years, including my neighbors, which a few of them are here, a few of them aren't, but it represents about 10 houses in our small area on Marshall Road. So we'd like to hear more about buyouts and/or lower taxes, property taxes for the flood that exists in that area or any area in Ouego, and reassessments to that. Right now, we'd like to see a buyout, because we don't see it getting any better, we see it getting worse from carbon...
Are you in the town or the village?
I'm not.
Town?
Kent Town.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but are you guys looking at buyout options?
We hear the buyout...
The locals have to make the decision.
We hear the buyout options are, there's not enough people interested, they don't know where to go, and the town doesn't have the funding, period.
I was told today it was at least two years down the road for a buyout.
And it's extremely tight...
That's what I was told today by someone here.
One at a time, you all get a chance.
Can I add to that? I have a thing written out, but the bottom line is, what can the state do to work with the flood insurance program? Because I don't know, I'm assuming some of us, we live on Marshall Road 2 and the other end, 2735. It's been a nightmare, the deals program. We have had four claim loss adjustments sent to us.
You have flood insurance?
Yes. We have $180,000 flood insurance. We have 44 inches of water in our main living space. The adjuster came, his initial report had 91 errors in it, of his itemized report. The third report he sent was had 84. We have filed a complaint with the insurance board, which I don't know if any of you know about. We had a great person working with us. But I'd like to know what the state can do, because this is a joke.
It's across the board.
It's an absolute joke. It really is an absolute joke.
So you're having problems with the insurance department?
Flood insurance program is terrible.
Who else is having problems with the insurance program with flood insurance?
Right here.
Yeah, I'm sure we're not alone. I know we're not alone. We've heard a lot of stories.
Okay.
What insurance issue, right here?
Okay, all right, okay. We can reach out to the superintendent's insurance department and see what we can do to the outland. They're screwing up. They should be screwed up. So here's what I would like you to do. With one of the staff, Brett, if you want to...
Actually, we've seen some pretty good results when people file complaints with the Department of Financial Services.
Okay, why don't you come on in? Brett works for me, he's an assistant counsel. Tell them exactly, what do we have to do for these folks so we can help them?
Phone number, and address, and stuff, email, whatever.
Actually, I have a website you can go right to. You can mail it, you can call them and do it over the phone, or you can file a complaint over the internet.
Do we have information we can get?
We're looking at it right now.
There was a gentleman at the Vestal library that we worked with. Okay, but let me just ask him for a second. You're finding that when people go to that department...
Within a couple of days, they're hearing... They haven't heard...
Did you go to the department?
Within a couple of days, they're hearing from the Department of Tax...
Okay, if you haven't heard a thing, I want to... He's talking about the Department of Tax and Financial Services.
Oh, Financial Services.
We went with the New York State Department. Yeah, okay. Hang on. Listen to Brett, okay? We're going to provide you as to where to go, all right? And we'll monitor, if you don't get any action after you reach out to them, if he's saying that we've been getting good results, I have to trust him, because these guys have been doing great work. Remember, I've got three counties, and we've...a lot of folks are in the same situation, and we'll...if after a week or so you don't hear anything, we'll give them a call, and we'll get on it for you. So please, do the email, and do what needs to be done first, okay?
Just kind of add to that, too. Here, it's what, October 19th? We've not even received in advance, with nothing, absolutely nothing.
We need to do this, and then we need to follow up.
Representatives from the state insurance office have issued a disaster recovery sentence that you can talk to.
Okay, but I think we get better results with this.
The state insurance department doesn't exist.
All right, so what is the name of the department again? It will have the email...
Department of Financial Services, it's a kind of arm of the bank.
And I know you're impatient, and I would be impatient, so give them some time, and then if you don't hear from them after four, five days, or whatever, we'll give you Brett's email address and a number you can reach him at, and we will follow through on it. Okay, I'm here to try to be helpful, all right? And I understand, I have met with hundreds of families, okay? And I know what you're going through. I didn't go through it personally, but I've seen it, I saw it in '06, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm going, I'll be in New Berlin tomorrow night, we're going all over the place to try to be helpful, to fix things if we can, in situations like this.
Can you get some information back to us on buyouts and dredging the river?
Well, the buyouts are strictly local. I mean, that's a determination that, you know...
But they tell us the buyouts come through the state and HUDD.
Well, they don't, they don't.
We're getting run around, that's...
Whoa, 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 whoa. We don't want to give you the rundown.
It starts at the state level. The state has to decide whether they're going to have a buyout program or not, and then the local government's going to buy into it.
No, sir, see, it's a reverse.
FEMA is the one that initiates buyouts. FEMA contacts, FEMA initiates a buyout, and then the municipality has the option to kick in, to buy into it. We have not been notified by FEMA yet that they've started this program up locally. What we've been doing is taking everybody's name and address at the code enforcement office there, and when the buyout program becomes available, if it does...
You want to help me?
Am I wrong?
Well, it works. FEMA takes the money they expend on this disaster. They take a percentage of it, give it back to the state for mitigation grants. Mitigation grant would be a buyout. You in turn, once the grant has been given to the state, they in turn notify us out so we can notify you that the mitigation grant program is open. Therefore, you would apply for a mitigation grant for buyouts. That's the way the process works.
That's the second county guy, he's the county emergency manager, you know. Who applies? The town or us?
The town.
The town.
The town applies us.
You let the town know you want to be bought out. They keep a list, okay?
Here's how we're doing it in Vestal, the same way he's saying. When the residents that have come to us, we told them to go to the town, so they meet with the town board and... Peter Andreessen. They tell them they want to be bought out, and then they wait for the process.
You said the town has to buy into it.
Correct.
Well, you people drive the town. The town is the wheel on the train. You drive, you're the motor that drives that wheel. They in turn go to the county and the state for resources to turn their wheel, okay? That's how it works. In order for that to get...
See, we don't know how much money that we could even put aside until we know...
How many houses...
How many houses in Ouego, and the town, and the village, and Vestal, and Kirkwood, and Conklin. We can't even, you know, estimate, you know, what our share of the responsibility would be until all these numbers come in. Let me come, this gentleman's a patient right here, I'm sorry.
I'm from Vestal Town, I'm in Twin Orchards.
Yes, sir.
I have seven feet of sewage in my first floor. I've been told by the town of Vestal, there will be no buyouts. I've gone to the FEMA centers, like at the Vestal library, and I say, "I'm here to talk to somebody about buyouts." And the FEMA, "Well, we have nothing to do with buyouts." I go talk to the town assessor from Vestal, and he says, "No, there's no buyouts. Fix your house."
That's not a good thing.
No, I'm not very happy. And I emailed you, you responded the next day very nicely. My problem, if I...if there is no buyout, okay? I, you know, anybody who wants to buy a house that's been sitting in sewage for 34 days, let me know. But I can spend $40,000 to fix it, but what can I get out of it? On the other hand, if there is a buyout, but nobody tells me for a year, and I spend $40,000 to fix it up, that $40,000 is right down the drain. Now, if somebody can tell me right now there's going to be a buyout or not going to be a buyout, I can do something, but I can't get that answer.
We've been out of the house this whole time.
I have somebody who works for you.
And I don't think a foundation missing six cinder blocks should be the reason a house is condemned. 34 days with sewage is a problem.
Everything, everything.
Flood insurance will tell you, "Wash it off, and it's going to be fine." That's what they told me. And the health department also closed the...
The DEC just pumped out my cellar for the 19th time this morning. When I tell people DEC's pumping out my cellar, that's...
I think the only thing I can say to you, and I don't know what else to tell you at this point, is until Vestal decides to do it, we're kind of...
I know, but I talked to Pete and this assessor, Mark Manoia. Oh, that's all New York State and housing and urban development.
Everybody's pointing finger at somebody else.
Pete says, "No, he won't know for eight...
I'm going to leave Dean here, but let me just tell you what the town position is here. We are taking everybody's name in the town that has an interest in a buyout. When we're notified that the program is going to exist, we're going to evaluate it. It's a 25% cost to the town right now, and we have to see if we can... You know, there's going to be a lot of people coming in, and I don't understand, I can't And I don't understand, I can't guarantee everyone we're gonna be able to buy out. The last flood we had a buyout, it took two years for the whole process to complete. We just paid for the property about two months ago in a board meeting. So, we're looking at it, our assessor, I mean, our court enforcement has everybody's name that is interested. If you are interested, get all the Debbie Stangers, she's gonna keep the list.
This is where the town will wheel up.
See, it doesn't matter to me if it takes two years on the finance.
Yeah, you just want somebody to-
I just want to know what direction to go in.
You can make a decision as to what to do.
My theory, everybody in my area wants a buyout. Buy them all out and start drilling for gas, because there's plenty of gas there, and let Vestal keep the gas rights.
And I'm just telling you, you know why they're holding out? Because then the town, or the village, the town has to maintain that property, they lose the tax-
Right, and the tax, that's the whole thing.
And the houses and water that-
One at a time.
I was gonna add one thing.
My water didn't get affected one bit in the flood. I walked in the house the next day, I could-
All I can tell you is you gotta keep pounding the board.
Oh, I have been.
That's all you can do. Before I go to the next question, that- do you have pens? Okay, I'm gonna give you the Department of Financial Services, I'm gonna give you a number and a website. Tell me when you're ready. We have some pens.
Department of what?
It's called the Department of Financial Services. The State Department that was set up.
It oversees insurance.
It oversees insurance and banking. We actually, one of the good things, sir, we did in the budget, we merged agencies this year too. We merged agencies. That's 1-800-342-3736. I'm gonna give you another phone number. And the website is www dot, is that DFS? Dot N Y dot gov. Sure, I will. www dot DFS dot NY dot gov. If after, say, a week, you don't hear, whatever, give the office a call and we'll- Good week?
Send you an email, yeah.
Okay, send us an email. Okay, now, let me come back, I'll compute in a second.
Yes, well, I was just wondering, since this type of thing, the disasters have been happening so much across the country, what is the process that's been going on in other states, other cities, other- I mean, are we running into similar problems here that everybody else is, or did they-
Yeah, FEMA, look at FEMA-
Solutions?
Sure. FEMA's federal. FEMA functions the same way everywhere. You know, I've been told, and I don't wanna throw stones at me, but I've been told, for the most part, they've been kinda responsive individuals, at least, in most cases.
Not the first one.
Okay, not the first one?
No, the first person I had said to me, "Why didn't you put things up higher?"
You're always gonna get some horses, you know, like this is her passion, and I'm sorry about that.
Hey, I'm trying to see if I can frame my question. So, if things are happening across the country-
Hey, hang on, may I?
If they- if disasters are occurring more frequently-
Sure.
And in bigger ways, I'd like to know what's gonna be done about maybe changing that trajectory so that we can do something about stopping that. I mean, communities, it's themselves, like, I was listening to a program that was talking about communities coming together to, what do they call it, not zoning, but ordinances, and developing their own ordinance to ban certain things, to be able- And if people are- if we're starting to take real measures in that sense so that we're stopping the cause in the first place of why disasters are happening like this? Do you see where I'm going with that?
I don't.
You don't?
Sorry, I don't either.
You don't, you don't-
No, 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 hey, hold on, hold on, no, no. All I'm saying is, let- I think you're on the same wavelength, yeah. And I guess what I mean by that is, I- look, I don't create natural disasters, there's a force-
We all are creating natural disasters. We're all creating them.
Now, there's obviously, people believe that there's certain things-
Believe?
Yeah, some people believe it.
Believe, you call it believe?
I call it believe.
Okay.
I don't think we need to talk about environmental issues at this-
Oh, yeah, we do. This is what it's all about.
Global warming, we only got an hour and a half. I ain't worried about global warming. Warming.
Climate change.
Well, the people in this room ain't gonna do nothing about global warming to get off of it.
It's being predicted for the end of this month.
There's no floods back in 2040.
If I could come back to my meeting for a minute, 37, 38.
Decision meeting.
I understand that, okay? And all I'm telling you is that if you're interested in environmental issues, you can go online with the state. We have passed a number of measures, you need to get yourself up to speed so that you can see what we've done in the state of New York that might be helpful with the ozone and other things. Now, let me finish-
Those are- they take a long time to take in. This is something that needs to be taken, done fast.
Okay.
This is happening fast. We can't leave it to the free market or things along those lines. To fix this, it's not gonna happen.
I hear ya, and I'm gonna move on because I think we have a lot of other folks that agree.
They can do what they want.
I have a question.
Listen to this gentleman's question.
It's kind of a combination of things that are coming up today. But there's a lot of us, we were flooded, we had 38 inches of water, well, twice-
Yes.
Because of some other reasons this time around, because of another rain later on. And my question is, everybody's talking about doing everything, but where's the money coming from?
There you go.
Can you tell us what-
Because it's gonna happen more and more, and it's gonna be less and more-
Well, I'm not talking about, you're talking- you should be talking to federal people. It's a national issue, it's either state issue.
It starts here.
Ma'am, we heard you, you made your point. Now, I need to answer this gentleman's question, and there are a lot of other people-
Brett's saying, you know, I'm saying is, what's the state's obligations, what kind of money, what does FEMA bring in? This gentleman explained a little bit. But I'm one of those people, like everybody else in here, that no matter who you go to, the state, the local government, or FEMA, they refer you to somebody else.
Well, that's why we're here, to try to be helpful.
Right.
FEMA has been paying out. I don't have a handle on what they've been paying out so far, but I can tell you, I've talked to a lot of people who have been very pleased as individuals with the response and checks, and you're nodding, so at least you're agreeing with that. From the state side, we are evaluating again. As I said, we have 15 counties that are under a federal disaster. I did talk to Governor Cuomo yesterday, we had a long conversation strictly, it was all flood-related. We talked about everything from dredging to getting more money from Washington so that we can assess what the state's share is going to be, because we have a budget coming up. And, you know, at some point in time, I would suspect that there's going to be something available to help, you know, mitigate some of the damages for local governments and others. I'm not at liberty to tell you what it is. We- if you look, all I can tell you is that we responded in '06, we responded very quickly, very effectively. Maybe not so quick, but the state actually did very well in helping buyouts and helping mitigate roads and bridges and those kinds of things. We're broke too, so we may have to, and I hate to say this, we may have to bond to go out for roads and bridges. We may have to do something. I don't like to say that because I was kinda bragging about how we've held the line on taxes and not had to borrow this year. But we are taking a full assessment, and I would guess that we're gonna come through with some sort of a program as it pertains to the damages to roads and bridges and the whole buyout for local governments. But we, as of this moment, as I stand before you, as honest as I can be, until we get an assessment of the damages, we can't do it in piecemeal.
Okay, my second part, because we get flooded by creeks.
No, I have a bill in, so that you know, with Senator Seward, but it's, you know, we're not even back in session, that would allocate an immediate $30 million for flood damages. And at this point, unfortunately, they're not calling us back, and we're trying to see if we can get back and deal with it. What's your second part?
My second part is hazard mitigation. And you talked about dredging the rivers, but I think a lot of the damage also comes from our creeks, with bridges being, which the local governments pick up, and the state does in some cases.
Let me answer that. Last time in '06, anybody here from DPW, from Hannover, no? We, I was able to get my hands on about $300,000, $100,000 for each of my three counties. And what we did is, we sat with soil and water, we sat with local officials, and we went to all of those creeks that were in really rough shape. And I believe, in the three county area, we actually were able to clean up and adjust some hundred-plus different creeks that had problems last time, and some of them didn't give problems this time because we cleaned them up. And Brett, what did we just do, D E C? What did we just get approved from D E C?
They extended the emergency permits process for your creek.
Would you just take a minute to explain that, so that people know what that means?
Basically, if you wanna do any work to a creek, generally you have to go to D E C, go through their whole process. They did the emergency authorization right after the flood, so people could start making emergency repairs for the three districts, or the three counties in your district. It was extended for another 30 days, I believe, until the end of this month?
End of month now. This month?
Yeah, so basically, as a landowner, what you need to do is, you call D E C, tell them what you're going to do, and you can go do it.
Because some people wanted to do it themselves.
I mean, you don't have to wait, yeah, you don't have to wait for them to come, show up, do- They will show up within a couple of days, but you can be working in the meantime. All the local departments of public works and stuff, they can get started on it now, but they have to notify within 24 hours of any work.
Because normally, that's a process.
Normally, it's a very long process.
That's right.
I've got a permitted now application at D E C that's put in in May or June. Have not heard an answer back yet.
Why don't you give us a holler? I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, the question, it pertained to D E C, because we get told by the town that they can't touch the creek.
They're right, they're not letting it.
Yeah, until D E C gives them the permission to do it, and these creeks fill up pretty fast.
Right, you can't do it, you can't dredge it once every, you know, flood, and then expect it to hold.
What we're going to do also is, we're going to do another assessment, you know, once this is all, when we take care of personal needs, we'll do an assessment, we'll go to each of the counties, the towns that have said, "What's creeks were in bad shape", and we'll see if we can find some additional funding to be helpful there.
And then, just one added thing, maybe your office can tell them. FEMA's telling everybody to call the Department of Insurance, New York State Insurance Commissioner. I was aware that there is no such thing, you merged, right?
It's actually the same thing.
Yeah, so, you know, but that's what they're telling everybody, and when you go to call, they're gonna say, "Oh, Department of Emergency-"
Let me just, we'll come over here in a second, let me, you got a question here, then I'll come back there, and then over here.
Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for all the help you have given our county and town. We should be thankful, not jumping on your back.
Well, you're not, you're not, people are frustrated.
But I've lived here 30 years, on Pennsylvania Avenue. Only twice have we had flooding. One was nothing due to the flood. A tank come down and blocked the bridge. This trip, both cities, the blood come down through, they never cleaned up the debris under the bridge. This trip, and your assistant there has a picture of the dirt still under that bridge, and it plugged it up, water can't get through. So, what does it do? It comes right down Pennsylvania Avenue to a people's house. I've got a ditch 136 foot long, about 10 foot deep in places. And I can't even get anyone to come and give me an estimate. You know, so, I took a picture, so you could see it.
We had the picture?
And then it, all this come down, and it has made natural dams across the creek.
Is that in the town, or that would be a deotation maybe?
That's a county.
County Bridge. Why do you all split out there, you kind of saw the water at the end of September? It seems like there might be some, something that could have come off, and that's all thought to remind about it.
Yeah, and there's natural dams built. I'll tell you, it's better than any beaver could make.
They're pretty good.
So, water's gonna get through it.
Brett, let's kinda stay on it. See, these are the things, like I said to this gentleman's question, that we can start looking at if we're in the road. I mean, they're not gonna solve your immediate damage, but hopefully we can-
Well, the only thing I'd like to see done is the creeks cleaned out first, because if it isn't, they all next predicting another one at the end of the year. Well, I don't wanna be in it.
Let me go back to this gentleman here.
All right, on the way home from our job, I'm Rosberg. I heard that NYSAC is gonna start up grants and programs for-
NYSAC, the energy company?
Yeah, for anybody that FEMA didn't cover, that they would help out for programs for-
Do you know something about it?
I just heard a little of the press release I saw.
Yeah, it was on the AM radio, 1290.
Good for them.
But I don't know if that, they have to apply to the state for that, or is that-
Well, it's not a state-run thing.
It's gonna be, I think it's a corporate-run thing. I think NYSAC is trying to be a good corporate customer, take enough of our money, so they're probably gonna try to give some of it back.
Well, I think what it was, is they're going to get some money from the state, or some level of government.
Really? All right, well, check into it.
I'd like to have a call back.
You know what might be happening, I don't know, maybe NYSAC has some extra money, and they're funneling it through, but I don't know. I don't wanna make any statement until I know what's going on.
NYSAC-
No, I'm sorry.
I had a meeting with NYSAC today, and they received $150 million that they plan on putting out for people for furnaces, heaters, water heaters, and so on.
Is this in addition to the program this other day?
Yeah, yeah.
So, is it more of the same program?
Basically, more of the same, that we started with the state's grant for-
We'll try to check into it. I know, I know nothing about it, I just heard about it. We'll check into it. Have you all applied, those who have lost refrigerators, heaters, whatever, have you applied for the state rebate?
No, they have to buy it first.
I'm sorry?
No money. FEMA said they have to buy it first.
Okay, okay, but those of you who have, you have applied for it. So, that's a good point, because if it's taking time for money, we're gonna have to figure out a way to extend it, that's a good point.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as a benefit.
Would you please make a note of that?
You can get an estimate for furnaces and turn that in.
You can turn an estimate?
Yeah, but that's never gonna turn.
For a furnace. They'll offset your awards in the end, if it gets held up and your insurance pays, or it'll just come out of your FEMA versus coming in. They'll just offset something with it.
Yes, sir.
You know, I wanna jump ahead a little bit. Well, first I'll jump back. At nine o'clock on the 9th of September, wife and I went out, we live on the flats by the high school. We went out to the levee and took a look. At that point, the water was rushing down within about a foot or so of the top of the levee. We walked up the levee, and the water was coming across the high school fields already at that time. And in fact, for where we live, that's where the water was coming from. Now, the, when the high school where the middle school was built, they pushed all this subsoil over the bank, over on top, this'll appeal to you, over on top of the roots of trees, and destroyed the trees, which are a natural barrier to the, you know, to erosion.
Sure.
Well, the high school, which presumably teaches environmental science, was busy destroying the environment at that point. And that's where the water initially broke through. It broke through where the construction of the school complex, the mega-complex, I should say, destroyed part of the riverbank, and if you go down and look at it, that's where it came, that's where it initially came through. So, my question going forward is, is there gonna be, I know you mentioned it briefly, I think you touched on it, is some kind of examination of how this occurred? The sequencing of it, the location of it? And then, consideration made perhaps to raising the levee a couple of feet and extending it north somewhat. I don't know whether that would have prevented some or all of the flooding. I only have my little purview. But in my view, if the levee had been extended back north-
Sure.
I don't know how far, a mile, something like that, and raised a couple of feet, then the dredging wouldn't have been necessary, although it is occasionally necessary. And it might have prevented some of the damage to the village, actually, I really think that ought to be looked at at some point.
We are gonna do a comprehensive look at all this stuff over time, and I think it'll be a work in progress as we look at it.
Yeah, obviously, first things.
Because obviously, this was the second hundred-year flood in, what, six years, so?
Five.
Nine years.
And we've aged that much time.
Okay, let me come over here.
About a couple of points, which I think you can help with, or maybe the Attorney General, or some other state agency. We're starting to get notices of declination of insurance renewals for flood insurance. Claims are getting in very shortly, and we got ours today, that if your loss in five years has exceeded your premiums, they're dropping you.
Our bank requires us to carry it.
Well, exactly, that's a problem. And we have a very good insurance company, Shubbs, which has a substantial reputation. And I've talked to a number of agents, and we're gonna see more and more of that, so people could be scrambling. And we don't have sort of a no-risk pool for flood insurance, sort of to drop into. And so, that's an issue. The second, they're suggesting it be at least 180 days before we start to see money today. That's too long.
Who's saying that?
The insurance agents. That the backup at the National Insurance Consortium level is such, that we're not gonna see money until, like, March. That's crazy. That's really crazy.
But that is something that, if you call into that number, you should let them know that too. And we're taking notes, we're gonna follow up with all that too.
And the second, different issue is-
That's just-
Yeah, it's certain. The cleanup organizations that come to town after floods, they're exorbitantly pricing their services. $20,000 to $40,000 a basement to dry it, and you're stuck. And often, they give a verbal quote, and I ran into this, where it's so much a square foot. Figure that out. Well, they don't count square foot, length and width, they count the floor joists. And it's usually three times, and so forth. So, I know one of my neighbors, he got a quota of $50-some thousand, and he went right to FEMA. And FEMA came back and said, "No, we have a limit," and they dropped it in half. But it seems to me, looking for the future, there ought to be some kinds of, I hate to use the word regulation, but they're scamming.
The future is to be.
So, if you have those, if you have those issues, is FEMA responsive to it, if you go to them?
Well, no, no, see, FEMA has a list of rates that it'll allow for certain kinds of functions. That's it. But if you have flood insurance, you're really not covered under FEMA.
Right, right.
So-
You're not really even covered for cleanup.
You're not really even covered for cleanup. I mean, we got thirty-eight dollars to clean our dockwork. I mean, thirty-eight dollars to clean our dockwork from insurance.
That's the insurance adjuster set, thirty and lots.
You, you got, you got a bad situation.
We have a horrible situation.
We have a horrible situation.
Have you called the number, if you don't get any response, we, we can give that to the bank or whatever. I, I believe it is, that's why, it doesn't, it's not right. I believe you, it's not right. I saw some other hands over here, yes, ma'am.
Different issue on power. I'd like to get a ditch or something, probably trying to let drops to help someone to work with. Because I don't know exactly what to do with Bay Street Castle Garden, power station, less than a hundred and fifty yards. Taken out in oh-five, we lost power.
NICEAC though, right?
Yeah, NICEAC, yes. And here in oh-six, we lost almost six, five and a half, almost off the six days with all power. Now, I'm high on a hill and I didn't get flooded, so I'm kinda fortunate at the end of it, listening to all these people and their problems. But we're just gonna keep seeing power out, power out every flood. And matter of fact, you've got minor floods, it'll take it out.
Brett's raising his hand.
We inquired about this a while ago, and I actually just got the official statement from NICEAC about four hours ago. You wanna read it?
Oh, you read it, 'cause you're younger than that.
Industry-wide practice is to site substations in proximity to the transmission lines that supply power to the substations in proximity to the customers to be served by the distribution circuits coming out of the substation.
So they didn't give it to us in English?
I know.
We gotta put the substation near the wires and we're not moving it.
The Castle Garden substation meets the proximity characteristics cited above. Following the two thousand and six flood characterized by the U.S. Geological Survey as between a hundred and five-hundred-year flood, when the Castle Garden substation was inundated and taken out of service, we raised the height of critical equipment in the substation above the record two thousand and six river level of thirty-three point seven feet at Bestville. These measures were designed to prevent damage from future flooding at levels comparable to the two thousand and six flood. However, the two thousand and eleven flood also characterized by USGS as between a hundred and a five-hundred-year flood resulted in a new record river level of thirty-five point two-six feet at Bestville, more than one point feet, one point five feet higher than the two thousand and six level, and this could not have been anticipated. As a result of the record flooding, we again sustained considerable damage to the Castle Garden substation. The substation is out of service and three thousand, or three thousand six hundred customers served by the substation were without power until floodwater receded and we were able to install a portable substation at the site. As we continue to make repairs to the Castle Garden substation, we are raising critical equipment even higher. We are also exploring additional options to lessen the potential effects of future flooding.
I understand why you didn't read that.
I agree with you. They did make a raise in oh-five, but that's not the answer. As you can see in oh-six, I don't, I don't hold a lemon here. So maybe oh-fifteen or whenever, the next five-year monster comes alive, it's gonna take it out again. And we're talking about a substation.
To an email we sent them asking them, you know, does it make a lot of sense for you to put this back there since, given what's happened? And this was the response we got, so. And we're with you, Senator.
There is a high line that runs right through the top of the town, the terrace. There is a pound of illegal property where there could be a mini-substation for to feed these customers, like my son was without power.
I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll take a shot at them directly. I'm not gonna promise it's gonna make any difference, but we'll, we'll take the direct shot at NICEAC.
I noticed because like my next-door neighbor needs to work for NICEAC, and now all decisions are made by Rick. That's.
Maybe we should all fly over there.
Just send the storms.
Let me, I promise you I'll take a shot at it, but it doesn't sound like we're gonna make any, against, yes, ma'am.
If you give us a phone number, we'll flood.
Phone number?
Or an email address, we'll flood.
All right, we'll work on that too. That's a good idea. Yes, ma'am.
So my question's related to rental housing.
Rental housing.
Because we've owned and taken care of rent, a couple of rental units in Oego.
Ma'am, hang on a second. Folks, if I could just ask, listen here and then we can, go ahead.
For over thirty years and tried to go from the black hat to the white hat, we consider that we're providing the service of housing. So without compensation, without salary, without anything, we, you know, we go our thirty years plus, and suddenly we have a loss like this. And I certainly, it's not personally hitting us like it is for all of you who are losing your homes. But I go to FEMA and we're considered an, an income property, so we're not eligible. We can go to SBA and take another loan. And we're looking at like, we may not look like it, but Medicare looks real good to us right now. And, and so we're not looking at twenty-five, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty more years of loans before we can reap it. So what, what is there to help with providing that rental market and helping landlords?
Right now, unfortunately, you're considered a business because it is income and, and as I stand here before you, the only thing available is a low-interest loan at four percent from the SBA, give or take, which is not a lot of help.
Right, and I'm aware of that, I love to that.
All I can tell you is that your situation is similar to another small business situation that we are trying to address. That was another issue that I had a conversation with the governor on, that small businesses are being left aside here and that, that a four-percent SBA loan isn't doing the trick. And I wish I had more to tell you at this point, but it's, it's, it's not a good picture.
I mean, there was, there was a lot of thinking, do I, I'm, I'm at the end of all those loans, you know, ready to finally reap some retirement funds.
I understand.
And I look at this building and say, I'll rip the walls out, am I going to put it back? I mean, hey, let the county have it. I mean, we made the decision to, you know, with, with faith that it's not gonna be lost in a couple of years, to start to put it back and, and take some loans, but not everybody can do that.
I understand. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot to.
I just think it'll, it'll have a major impact on the housing stock.
Oh, I think it's gonna have a huge impact.
I'm one of those people, I'm a small business person, and like I said, have our business and we've been their family-owned for over fifty years. Never ever have had water in our store. Our water, we're four blocks from the river. Our water came up through the storm drains. We got four for water in our store. Same thing, I called FEMA, they said nothing, they sent me to the Small Business Administration. My insurance company says, oh, no, nothing can be covered because you don't have flood insurance, which we're not required.
Doesn't, doesn't it comes through the trade?
Came up through the storm drains. It's flood-related.
If you have it in your policy.
It's in, it's in checking into it.
Is it in your policy?
I have somebody looking into it, but they sent me a letter of denial. We went, they sent us to the Small Business Administration, and it isn't four percent if you've got good credit. If you've got good credit and low debt, it's six percent. I just got off the phone with them today. And like I said, you know, it's like they want us to take out this loan. We lost probably seventy-five thousand dollars in inventory, probably another fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in equipment. So I'm looking at a thou, a hundred thousand dollar loss with no helpless law there, other than with Marty Salpride's been helping us out. The IDA, they come in with a ten thousand dollar loan for, if you've lost furnaces, I lost two furnaces, ninety-seven hundred dollars, which is, you know, zero percent for three years, which we were ecstatic to get that. But my point was like through the Small Business Administration, you would think that they would give you money, not give you money, but at least lend it to you at a cheaper rate, at least maybe even zero percent, so that you could at least get back on your feet. We were this close and not open on our business. If it wasn't for people like Marty that keep, you know, coming in saying, you know, hanging there, you know, and the people that, you know, the community, it's just like we're just, we've been closed for a month and a half. My husband and I were just like, you know, at our wit's ends, we're just like, you know, no helpless law there.
So the only, Marty, the IDA, do you know what your loans?
The IDA can't loan money, or they can't give money away, so what we did was take the, we had a revolving loan that we had lent out to businesses and the money came back, so we got permission to loan that money out. So it was a decision by the IDA to get these zero-interest loans to businesses, and, and the money went like that. We had a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we loaned out to like sixteen businesses. And the thing of it is, people were really ticked.
They were what?
If they couldn't get the money. I mean, there were so many requests.
Let me, let me ask you this, and then, are there any other business owners here that are in the same situation?
Would, would rental business be qualified? Unfortunately, no. We had to set a criteria. You had to own the business, you had to have your business within the building, because you just had to set a criteria. And then we had hoped that we would establish some sort of an organization that would receive money that we could give to businesses as a grant. But, you know, there's some logistics that we've gotta grow.
Yeah, yeah. If, if there was additional.
To give them hope.
Well, let me ask you this. Let me ask you. You said you have a hundred thousand dollars of the damage. Did that ten thousand dollars help you to?
It put me through furnaces.
Okay, so, so that's helpful.
It was very helpful.
It's helpful.
And like I said, it's zero percent for three years. But it had to go for mechanical things like furnaces, generators, hot water heaters, which we were able to.
And how much money did you have?
We had a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we loaned out to about fifteen or sixteen.
And how many people do you have asking for money right now?
I think we had like thirty.
So, so you could only help half of them?
Yeah. Now, let me ask you a question, Senator. In two thousand and six.
Stay there, stay there.
In two thousand and six, we got flooded, and at, at that point, the chamber was located on Front Street and Main Hill. And we didn't apply for FEMA, or we couldn't qualify for FEMA, didn't wanna do an SBA loan because, but the Department of Economic Development at the State of New York did have a grant program. And, 'cause I, that was one of the pieces of paperwork I saved from the.
Unfortunately, we had money then.
Yeah, and so that paid for the trash removal in front of our.
So I guess what I'm asking you is this, 'cause I'm trying to come away from here and come up with some creative ideas to help a little bit of everybody. If there was some more money available for, for low-interest loans,
That would help.
Two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars, would that be helpful, or do people just say, you know, what, you're crazy?
Well, Joe, is that answer?
Like I said, we weren't so grateful to that then, because like I said, it was like five, or it was like ten thousand dollars that I did not have to take out of my working cap to try to get our business running.
Because one thing we found is people are discouraged, and I know individual residents are so very discouraged. But the businesses, we want them to stay open because they, they fuel our economy, so anything that will give them hope.
Okay, okay, that's helpful to me. Yes, ma'am. Is there anybody, before you start, is there anybody here that knows how to turn the air conditioning on?
Well, this may seem relatively trivial compared to some of the questions I've been asked. Where I live, there we go, which is across the street from Bricktown. I don't know if you're familiar with that.
I'm familiar.
Since two thousand and five, I rent, my landlord, he lives on the other side of the river. Since two thousand and five, our basement has been flooded four times. Their first floor has been completely wiped out twice. And when I say completely, I mean completely. This time, it went more than halfway up the stairs to the second floor. I guess my question is, in two thousand and six, when all this happened, I went to FEMA as a renter. They gave me a certain amount of money, and then being, you know, these agencies, being government agencies, you have to jump through hoops to do. So the next hoop was to apply for an SBA loan, so I went to the guy at the SBA table and told him.
So you're the owner of the building?
No, I'm the renter. But they told me, okay, FEMA gave me money, they told me that if I wanted any more assistance, that I had to apply for an SBA loan. I did sing for my mom, who was sitting right next to me. My credit at that time was so poor, that the guy at the table that I was talking to said, you're immediately declined. You go to New York State and apply for additional assistance. New York State came through with another five to six thousand dollars.
It was five thousand dollars.
And this time, New York State is nowhere to be found.
Well, New York State doesn't have the five thousand dollars, that's the problem.
But, but as an example.
You're right, I'm just telling, no, no, I'm just telling you this, yeah, you're right.
But, but what irritates me is, this is just an example of the waste that New York State has produced. Because personally, I went, I used to be self-employed, but I was a medical transcriptionist at home and I was working long distance, so I was getting a ten ninety-nine.
Sure.
The company I worked for revised the ten ninety-nine, gave it to the IRS, never informed me. So I ended up owing the IRS and New York State additional money in taxes. Following year, I had a refund coming to me from New York State, which paid off the remainder of, you know, I had been making payments. So to make a long story short, they ended up owing me money. So instead of just going, okay, this is the amount of her refund, this is the amount that is left on what she owes, and subtracting that from the refund and sending me one check.
Yeah, but wasn't that, wasn't what you owed to the Small Business Administration?
No, 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 I'm talking about, so this is something completely different. I'm talking about the waste from New York State.
It's something the IRS, if you, if you're on a payment line with a tax payee, as a taxpayer, you have the right to direct that against whatever, whatever you want. So they can't, they can't just offset it and send you back the refund if you have a refund coming?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, here's the, the amount of the refund they owed me. This is the amount I still owe New York.
Okay, in taxes?
Right.
Okay.
The logical thing to do.
Oh, and be to deduct what you owed them?
Would be to deduct what I still owed them from the refund and send me one check.
If they did that, they couldn't get the additional fees out of you on the other side.
But what they did.
No, I'm serious, I'm not being.
No, seriously, what they did is they went back to the beginning, took the refund, applied it to what I owed at the beginning, but then, and, and so.
At the beginning?
Yes, the very beginning of what I owed. They took my refund here and went back and then calculated what I had paid in monthly payments and came out, long story short, I'm making this too long, instead of sending me one check.
Sure.
They sent me six checks for thirty dollars apiece for the monthly overpayments that I had made.
Pretty stupid.
Plus, they sent me a seventh check. Now, not only did they send me seven checks, when they should have sent me one, they sent a form letter with each check.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, look at, I'm sorry to do this, and I'm not gonna sit here and defend the bureaucracy of some of the agencies. It is, it's waste, it's not right.
There's no help coming from New York, but there's idiocy, idiocy like this going on every day.
Your point is well-taken.
I, you know, I'm sorry, I, I don't.
No, don't be sorry. I'd be a little aggravated by that too.
Yeah, and, and it's like, people like my mom and myself.
Sure.
My mom has been totally wiped out for the second time.
Send you the, the seven letters. No, I'm serious, that's difficult.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I concur.
But this, you know, it's like my mom has been wiped out for the second time in six years, five years. And there's no help coming. And she has flood insurance. I don't have flood insurance. I can't afford it.
We, we have not been able to come up with anything yet until we assess damages, and once we assess damages, we have to determine, see, our whole concept is that FEMA is going to help individuals. See, last time, we did five thousand dollar grants. If you remember last time, the FEMA rates were much less, and, and they, they didn't show up for weeks, okay, so.
No, 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 not true. At least not in Oego. They were here within days in Oego. It turned out three weeks this time.
We didn't set up the centers for three weeks the first time. I tell you that for a fact.
Yeah, where's this assessment gonna get done? That's what everybody's saying. We got, this has gotta get done, but you're not doing it.
Ma'am, until the town, each town tells, the people say, buy me out, until they get all that information, until they go out and assess the property. I mean, it's, it's not just something that you can do out of the, I'm just saying, it takes time to do it. It takes time to do it, and you have to look at, look at. The state, before, I have three other counties that have the same problems you do.
I realize that, but you know, Pennsylvania, parts of New York, around us getting FEMA trailers, nothing around here, nothing. I had to go get an apartment to live in. I don't have any place to live.
Is it true Pennsylvania has FEMA trailers?
Yes, and they're setting up FEMA parks down in Stair. And what do we have here? Nothing.
Well, you were told.
We are, we're not getting them.
Really?
Yes. We don't need them.
Well, okay, then listen to me. Who's, Ron, help me out, who's the congressional representative here? Because we should be pounding the hell out of him. We should hit him both. We should hit them both, because, ma'am, you're right, you should be aggravated. That, that's federal. We'll get on the phone with them tomorrow, but I need you to help me out. Again, that's FEMA's federal. I'm Albany, they're Washington. And we should be pounding the hell out of them if they're not gonna go to the trailer, that's not right.
Talk to them all Monday, everybody.
Uh, hang, hang on a second.
We'll talk to all three of them Monday about it.
Well, I'm gonna ask you before you help me, because I'll get on the phone with them all tomorrow, that's ridiculous.
And you might have a model...
Well taken, thank you for bringing that up.
You might have a model in Athens, the publicity just came out of there, so they went through their village.
Well, did they lose more people than we did today?
They had a hotbed in Athens, and they apparently responded by bringing in outside firms or setting up...
You know something?
We do, we, we found...
Who knows? Dick knows, Dick knows everything. Dick, you're awful. Hot school, Dick.
Okay, right now, what FEMA has been doing in this region, okay? First off, Pennsylvania is a different FEMA region. Different ballgame. What we used to work for, okay? FEMA Region Two, which we're in, plays the game a little...
We didn't like it when you worked for them either.
I know, I know, I understand that. But FEMA Region Two plays the ballgame different than FEMA Region Three. So, what's, what's happening right now, FEMA is taking, if you have called in to register with FEMA, they're calling you back and asking you if you're gonna be have, if you're gonna be safe, sound, and secure for the winter, and would you like to, or, or do you need additional places to stay? Okay? They're compiling these numbers, they've called around to, what was it, I think it was, A hundred, PayPal, anyhow, they've worked it out, right now, they're saying they need twenty-five mobile units in this county.
In this county?
Right. I'm saying, you're, you're wrong, you need more than that, but...
How many do you think we need?
Twenty-five on our road alone.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say we need, we need a lot more than that, but what we're doing, okay? This weekend, Rotary, Kiwanis, and the Lions are going out door to door with people, we took up the criteria, they still don't have, the people that do not have power connected to their homes, are going door to door to all these homes and asking them, "Do you need a, a place to stay for the winter? To be safe, sound, and secure?" And we're taking these numbers, and that's what I'm saying, okay, these are the people that need the places to stay. Now, you give us the help, house me.
Can I ask you a question?
What if you're not at the house? You know, what if you're not at the house? You said they're coming to the houses. My house isn't livable.
Okay, then, did you register with FEMA?
Yes.
Did they call you yet?
No.
They will be.
Yeah, they keep calling me, yeah.
You mean that...
And you have to keep the dialogue open with them, okay? You have to tell them, okay, I, I don't have a place to stay, if, if, if you don't hear from them, call them back. I need a place to stay.
You're saying FEMA called FEMA back?
FEMA, yeah. The one hundred number, keep the dialogue open. If, if you don't like the, the places they give you to check out, to move to, tell, "Hey, I don't like these three, give me three more." And tell them why you don't like them. You have to keep that dialogue open with them.
Which is true, that is true. But, um, they aren't, they aren't paying for you to rent this other place, they're only helping you find another place to live.
They give you, they give, they give you assistance to rent that place.
Eighteen hundred dollars will not pay rent.
Okay, then you tell them, hey, I need, the places you give me to rent cost me more than eight hundred dollars, you need to up your ante to me. Tell them that.
Well...
Don't be bashful with them, tell them, up their ante. If you don't tell them, they don't know.
But the thing is, yeah, because I'm still paying a mortgage on a home that's not livable.
Right.
I can't pay to rent some of these, too, and...
We, we were told today, you know, where you told, but...
They're just helping you find a place.
The FEMA representative who told, said that if there's any issues here tonight, to go see her...
Her name's Ellie.
Ellie?
Yeah.
And let them know. So, go and let them know. Tell them you need a place to stay, and we'll, we'll make some phone calls to find out where the trailers are. Now, Dick, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but what did you mean by one region works different than the other?
No, they're not supposed to, but they do. They, they own, they, they have their own rules that they play by, okay? For example, okay, I wrote, we have a, a group of, in, between Waverly, Sharon, and Athens, that it was a project impact community. Okay, that was a thing set up by Clinton. Okay, so, I wrote a plan for this community. Region Three bought it immediately, took me five years to get it through Region Two.
Why?
Because I could see a region two.
What is it, same agency?
Same agency, but different, they play by different rules.
That's crazy.
They're playing with people's future.
I'm just telling you, that's the way it works.
You know what, I'll tell you what, here's, here's, here's what I'm gonna do, I, I'm gonna have a serious conversation with, with Congressman Henchey tomorrow. Who else is here?
Hinchey.
No, you forget that. I'm carrying, look at this. It's a waste of my time. You can call them, though, you should harass the hell out of them. And if you should, call Hinchey or Hannah, because this is serious, and I'll do my part, too. But you, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Well, like, if you're turned down for FEMA, and they're supposed to send an inspector to the house anyway, you're turned down.
Why were you turned down?
Why were you turned down?
Well, my sister and I have a house in, in the state, and they're saying the house is not habitable, you know, nobody's living, and yet there's homeowner's insurance on it, electric's hooked up to it, gas is hooked up to it, uh, cable's hooked up to it, everything is on, the light goes on, everything, heat was up, and they're saying as long as the house was, there was nobody in the house. Yep. My sister and I, my sister was, they said it was no good.
And primary residents?
It wasn't a primary resident. Yeah, in this book, it says there's, they tell you, there's two or three different ways they can do it. They can say yes or no.
What's her name? Oh, where are they located?
Main Street, well, up West Main Street.
Oh, yeah, Church and Nazarene.
Would you do me a favor, do you have time tomorrow to go see her?
I'm going tomorrow, I have to work.
All right, would you tell her that you talked with me, and you, and I asked you to go see her again, and explain the situation? If you don't get any satisfaction, would you give us a shout?
Okay, and it's on your hotline right here, Rick.
Uh, I hope you're that way, huh?
Sure, if I'm one of these people.
I'm still...
I'll come back, but I wanna see if there's somebody else with a question that didn't ask, or whatever. Yes, sir.
Go back to the, go back to the oh-six study on dredging the river, basically, if you're gonna move any forward for two thousand and one.
I'm sorry, say that again, go back to the oh-six study, what?
You said you, you, there was a study on dredging the river.
No, actually, no, no, I said in oh-six, the, the, we met, we had a, a extensive meeting with the Army Corps, and, um, water and soil, everybody, and they basically told us that if they dredge the river here, it's gonna cause serious problems in other places, whatever. Here's, look, I don't pretend to, to understand the dredging of the river, whatever. The only thing that I do know, and it's kinda basic, that there are islands in this river, and there's buildups like by the school and whatever, that weren't there thirty-five years ago. And I'll tell you what, they dredge, I saw them dredge the Shenango River, because I worked at the bank in the night in the seventies, and our offices were on the Shenango River, and I watched them dredge. So, you know, I, I don't know why they don't do it anymore. Tina's getting nervous, because she says, "Don't make any commitments about dredging the river." You know, I'm not making any commitments, but I wanna understand why, why that some of these high spots can't be taken out. I really wanna understand.
Will you understand that, will you let us know?
And actually, I said that to the governor yesterday, and he said the same thing, "Why can't they take them out?" And I said, "You're the governor, I'm asking you." So, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna check into this very seriously. I'm not here telling you it's gonna get done, I'm telling you, I want some answers. We've had two hundred-year floods in six years. This flood was worse than the last one. God forbid, who knows what's next?
It seems like that town could be dredged, and, and the flood wall would build up with whatever you dredge right out, real easily, and it would be a double, double...
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, I understand that.
Basically, environmental issues, that's what they are. That's what I...
Good. You know, one thing I would wanna say is, you know, a way FEMA, I think FEMA could be corrected is like with us, we have flood insurance, if it would work for us, I mean, we got eighteen hundred dollars for FEMA to, since we were displaced. And you know what? If our flood insurance program worked for us to cover our expenses, like you would think, it would, I would gladly give my eighteen hundred dollars to you guys so you could go rent a place out there, because, I mean, we pay seventeen hundred dollars a year.
I, I don't know, your, your situation is very bizarre.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, in general, if anyone who has flood insurance...
There's obviously something wrong with the insurance company, and I think we need to really seriously look into it. Something doesn't make sense. You've paid a lot of money for flood insurance, and there's just...
And I would, I wouldn't want FEMA, I mean, we had it, I would gladly give FEMA to somebody who doesn't have flood insurance.
That's, that's the norm.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. A complaint that I've heard from a lot of people is that the insurance company gives the money to the bank, and the bank wants to hold it until they see that the work is done. So, you don't have money to do the work while the bank's holding the money.
Right.
And I've heard that from a, a number of people, so I think it represents a lot of people.
Yeah, I had to explain, too. I had to explain over like a twenty-hour extended conversation to people that, "An advance" means before the final determination of the war, it doesn't mean you hold on to the money. It's an advance, so let the money go. Well, they, they still haven't let it go, and it's, it's been, what, six weeks? I haven't got a dime from the insurance.
Does any, I'll call you a sec, what's happening? We'll do that. Does anybody else have a question before I go? I just want everybody to...
I do.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, I'm, you were quoted in the press talking about Senator Ball, upstate, downstate, the, uh, downstate, you know, people shouldn't tell us what to do. Are you in support of Senator Seward's Home Rule Bill?
Here's, here's what I, here's what I believe. Um, and sometimes the press doesn't print everything that you say to them. I support environmentally safe drilling.
Do you support Senator Seward's Home Rule, Home Rule Bill?
I don't know what his bill, I don't know what his Home Rule Bill is, but let me finish...
It's gonna allow local communities to decide for themselves whether they want hydrofracking.
No, I don't.
You don't support Home Rule?
Don't get us targeted with me, let me finish my statement.
Okay.
Because you got the camera, don't get carried away. The DEC will determine scientists, geologists, experts, not politicians who don't know the first thing about geology, or, or drilling, or making up things, but the scientists, the experts will. They will determine whether or not they will permit natural gas drilling in New York State. I trust them.
Yeah.
Okay? I trust them. Before I trust a Home Rule situation.
So, the people shouldn't have the right to decide for themselves?
That's not true, that's not true, that's not true. The local governments in this region all want natural gas drilling.
Can I show you something? Let me get you, I have to come, I just have to come over here to get something. So, what this is, this is, this is a listing...
You're obviously against it.
This is a listing by, by name.
He's obviously against it.
I just wanna, I just wanna, I would just like to state that...
Stop, stop, get on your good side.
May I?
My name says, who's running the camera?
So, okay. So, this is a list...
Let him, let him, let him finish, please.
This, this is a list by name.
They all...
Actually, well, here with me, let me just have my say. This is a listing by name of all of the communities all around New York State that are in favor of a ban, they have already enacted a ban, or they're moving towards a ban.
How many in Tyler, the Shenango and Groome County?
Actually, in, in Shenango, there's, there's three, in Shenango County. And there's one in Groome County. And this is a map by county of all of the little places all around. There's probably about fifty now, local communities that have enacted local bans. So, I would like to give this to you.
And why, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why do they want a ban?
You'd have to ask them, I suppose. I can tell you why.
Are there scientists and geologists on that board that really understand on those individual...
Well, there's quite, there's quite a few scientists that are, say that it's very...
That are elected to...
It's in, it's inherently unsafe activity, inherently unsafe. It cannot be, there is no such thing as safe drilling. There's no such thing as safe drilling.
Okay, let's not, hey, Dave, whoa, 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 let's not get, let's not get carried away.
I'm in the senator's district.
Listen, listen, the man is entitled to his opinion, and he's got a camera, so he feels that his opinion is gonna be strong, because now he's gonna put it on TV.
It's been a disaster everywhere, it's gone, that activity, it's ruined water systems everywhere.
No facts to support that.
I have a ton of them.
We're not gonna get into that, we're not gonna get into that, but just for the record, if you're gonna have this on, I do support environmentally safe drilling.
There's no such thing.
Economically, economically, it's gonna pull this region out, it's gonna help us tremendously. Okay.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go, I'd like to go, drill, drill, drill. Bring it on, the money!
Um, yes, sir. And I'm being a gentleman and let you record this, because you're not actually a news agency, you're just somebody who can...
I can, I can ask a question, I have it a pending as a citizen.
No, 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 you're, you're right to ask a question, which not everybody brought a camera like you, so I would be very kind to you to let you bring the camera.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
It's a public meeting, I don't think, you know, I think that...
Yeah, but you're gonna...
People have a right to film in public meetings.
Yeah, fine, and I, and I didn't ban your camera.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be right, to ban a camera at a public meeting, don't you think?
Well, I don't know, I, I don't know. It's kinda weird to bring a camera to a public meeting. It's kind of weird to bring a camera to a public meeting. Yes, sir.
I think there's a great deal of apprehension about hydro fracking use of water.
Yes.
There is an alternative which involves the gelatinized or liquid propane with ceramic chips that is highly efficient, highly effective, and does not generate the chemical situations. Why?
Would you ask this gentleman if he's for it?
No, I'm not going to get into the discussion of... I am simply here to share what I think I am aware of.
You're right.
It's gas frac.
Hasn't been perfected yet, it's being tested.
It has been perfected to the degree that I think they put down 2,100 wells in different parts of the United States and Canada, but there are none of the issues that go with hydro or water fracking.
It takes away a lot of those, yes, sir.
I would like the public to become a little more enthusiastic about understanding this process and eliminating some of the ignorant hysteria that goes along with the rest of the process. Hydro fracking in and of itself may be hazardous. It certainly has a significant number of chemicals that I wouldn't like a glass of. But there is an alternative. It's very limited because there are a limited number of drilling rigs, and the first issue of this is the explosive nature of the product, liquefied propane, gas and ceramic chips. But you have the same possible situation with methane coming out of the ground uncontrolled. I would simply like to see a much greater public exploration of this process and then make the decision.
That's a great statement.
I have two other things that I would like to ask you.
Well, please do. You're being patient and quiet, isn't it?
No, because they're not flood-related.
That's all right. We're not here to discuss it.
Do you or are you in favor of the unqualified...
Hang on, David.
Are you totally in favor of the unqualified endorsement by the Board of Regents for the Dream Act? The Board of Regents of the State of New York has come out with an endorsement of the Dream Act. Be careful, I'll leave this rhetorical. The other one is not rhetorical. How much money will it cost us when H R 3590 becomes actuality? Patient protection, affordable healthcare? Ring a bell? No. The governor has stated that there is no money to offset increased Medicaid costs that are coming down the road.
Sure.
The problem I have had for the last six years in contacting federal and state elected representatives is that, A, no one will tell me how much it's going to cost to insure one uninsured, and what will the long-term effect of H R 3590 be on our locality? I'll leave those rhetorical at this time if you wish, and for those of you who are here interested in the flood situation, you may have all the time you want.
Is the only thing I need to ask you, since I am an Albany representative and not a federal, what is H R 35...
Patient protection, affordable healthcare.
Okay, that's a federal. That's a public. No, no, I didn't know what it was because I'm in Albany and not in Washington.
That's what your recording says. If it's a federal issue, talk to your federal representative.
Well, that's usually how it works.
But unfortunately, it does have an effect on the local area, which is your domain, and we should know what is coming down the road before Mr. Hinchey tells us.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to this question over here.
Hi, first of all, thank you for coming yourself to be here. I really appreciate it. And my comment is that I don't know if you are aware of this.
Leaving a lie is critical.
I don't know if you're aware of this as well as many people in this room, but with the... in relation to the hydro fracking, the gas and oil industry have been exempt from the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, and several other very important acts to our children's health, our own health, our children's future. And I don't know how many in this room are aware of that, but I have a little... This is a two-minute DVD that tells you which acts, if anybody would like one.
No, leave us out.
And I think that people just need to get educated more, you know, because this... they are corporations, they are industries, and they don't really care about any of us and our future as far as our health and any left, you know, so.
Respect your opinion and we'll be more than happy to look at it. All right, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to kind of wrap up, but if anybody has anything, I mean, I don't want to leave with anything unanswered, but I'll come back a couple times around. We'll start here, we'll go here.
Just kind of about the river dredging, Marshon Road. I don't know if you were aware in fact that parts of Marshon Road sat in water for weeks.
Thank you for coming, by the way. If you're leaving, thank you very much.
Did you guys sit in water for weeks?
Would you make sure to get the cards? That we just head straight up? Excuse me. Make sure everybody gets one of these little... I'm sorry, thank you. Repeat that.
People are talking about doing dredging of the river, the creeks. We live across the street from a swamp, okay? Parts of Marshon Road sat underwater for weeks. I know my house sat for days, the house across the street sat for weeks. We see beavers all over the place. I know for a fact there's beaver dams damming that up. What can they do about that?
I think it has to be part of the assessment.
Yeah.
No, it has to be part of the assessment. We're watering the water and we go through like we did a couple years ago, what we did after the last flood.
Yeah.
And we're going to have to look at it. We'll work with local officials and we'll see, you know, what parts are dammed up, what parts need to be removed. We were very successful at it last night. It was five years ago and maybe it built up again, but I think a lot of the places that didn't flood this time were because of some of the cleanup. We did quite a few of them. All right, yes, ma'am.
Are someone saying that there was a number that we could call the NICE Act?
Yeah, we have that number. Can you read it out?
One eight hundred...
This is the NICE Act number?
Yeah, one eight hundred, five seven two, one one three one. They probably tell you about that program as well, that number.
What's the number again?
One eight hundred, five seven two, one one three one. Thank you.
I'm disappointed.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's a great jumping on point from the beavers to the human beavers. Because flooding and many disasters, there's the natural disaster and then there's the human death disaster in terms of development that is taking place within the watershed.
Excuse me, could we just listen to this lady?
And I... And the issue is, it's a regional issue and it's a multi-state issue, and basically if you think that we all live downstream from somebody else, but what they do upstream from us is having a major impact. So every time you see parking lots and big roofs going up, it's impacting what's going to happen in the future in flooding. It's not just, I mean, it's global warming, it's also development. So what is being done? I've heard that the Susquehanna Regional River Commission, the basin, whatever, SRBC, that maybe they might be able to get a piece of this, but what... I mean, I think it...
Well, they're very active in all of them.
But here's one thing, is each little regional area that is planning and permitting development, they're making a decision for themselves economically. But what we need is the big picture because when there's a Walmart that's built upstream from me, it's going to impact me. When there's an area that holds water during flood, when it is filled in for some small business, it may be a new small business, it's going to impact the people downstream from them. And if you think about all the things that have been built upstream from Oeggo since 2006, start thinking a little bit about how that impacted and where the water went.
Also, one that is the flood wall that boards put up.
Riverside Drive.
Absolutely. And there were more businesses talking of putting flood walls on.
And that goes back, and again, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be looked at, but that goes back to the Army Corps' whole argument about dredge. That goes right back to their whole problem.
Just one other thing, though, just in line of what this lady just shared. My question is, is there going to be somebody looking at doing much like they did with the Chamonix River? Went out to the Tyoga P A and put in the dams and helped to hold back water? Is there going to be any discussion or thought, is it looking at this watershed?
I think it has to be part of the overall discussion.
And is there some leverage there due to the fact that Pennsylvania is so intricately involved as well with Susquehanna Valley and having other deposits like that?
I think those discussions have to take place.
That's long-term. That doesn't resolve the issues and the hurt that are going on today, but think about this later.
But I think you have to think beyond dams and levees because we know over time they fail. It is maybe twenty years, maybe fifty years. I think the municipality of Syracuse or that area, I think that they... I don't know a lot of the details, but they were being forced to manage their storm water in a very expensive way. Instead, they decided to go with more tinkering with the system with green roofs, encouraging green roofs, encouraging people to have their wastewater go into... Instead of going down driveways out to the street. I think that if we think about the small things and the big things, when you build a big building with a parking lot, then part of it has to be where's the water going to go? Green roofs. Binghamton University has just built a roof with it. I was in Germany. Not only do they have solar farms everywhere, I mean, farm fields filled with solar panels, barns filled with solar panels, you just drive on the Autobahn. But also they have green roofs on their buildings. That means grass going on the building, so when it rains, it goes on the grass. When it gets dry, it gets brown. When it rains, it absorbs it. So I think, but you know, I don't know if you do something with that with, I forbid, tax incentives, encourage people, a carrot, or if you do it and you say, "We're not going to permit you to develop here."
Hey, whoo, whoo, whoo. Shoot, again.
Unless you do this.
Let's be respectful, come on.
Because I think in Syracuse, they are deciding rather than burdening the taxpayer with major infrastructure that's going to go very expensive, they're trying to do this in ways that are smaller and less impactful.
Doubts to say that, yes, sir.
Yes.
Well, thank you. And we've done, and I was a part of the Binghamton University Building, that was part of the funding that we did.
Excellent, I applaud you for that.
Yeah, it was... And we actually, we have a green legislation bill that encompasses a whole host of things. We're just trying to weed it out so that it's realistic and not impractical, and I think that that will be something that we'll pick up in next year's session. It encompasses a lot of these things, but again, we need to be practical about it. But we need to head in a lot of those directions and we've been negligent. Okay, yes, sir.
I had to say something. I'll defer on...
No, please, go.
One has to do with the issue of the flooding in the river and the dredging. The other part of this equation is obviously the things you're talking about and all the stream mitigation, the other things you do to offset this. We spent the morning, I have been on soil-water board, and we spent the morning talking about putting together a plan, a longer-term mitigation plan for the stream, all of which would include some of the work we did after the 206 flood. And I think the encouraging thing that comes out of there is if you start to think, "Not the river, that's a bigger issue," but all of those areas are feeded into it, it gets to be really a complicated integration system, what it becomes. And one good news, I think, is we have a center of competence that we built up here, I think, over the last three to four years, between soil and water, I'm glad to hear you talking, Wendy, we're competent people, Upper Suspan Coalition, Jim Caratola, a whole range of about twelve counties that are part of the Upper Suspan Coalition, and they can help develop plans that once that ownership is taken by residents and members of the community, you can develop a long-term plan. Because the bad news is there's no simple short-term solution. It's an integrated kind of problem. I think working together, we can do this. The second part of this has to relate to natural gas, and I'll just mention this because it has to do with soil-water number something. I was at a conference, soil-water conference, and I spoke to this fellow, Jim Tierney, who's Assistant Commissioner, and one of the questions I posed, he gave a presentation, was that if and when the natural gas happens, there's certain organizational chart duties for DEC, for the towns, they're very restrictive and they say what you can do. And the point, the question I asked him was, "It's not going to happen that way. Nice to have the org charts, here's who's going to do what, but you see in the flood, it doesn't work that way." So I said, "Are you willing to accept the fact that you may need some support in the communities of technical competence to help our citizens in getting through this if and what happens?" And offered that they take a look at some of the plans that the regional soil-water groups have put together to help be a buffer in that area of when this thing hits, of concerns that come from residents like you have here concerning the flood, that there's a center of competence that you conduct it. So I would just leave that, and I emphasize for the people of Marshon, one thing about being retired, you can spend a lot of time, I spent a lot of time up on Marshon Road. That's a disaster. Flats are a disaster. There's a lot of people that are hurt here, so.
I live there.
But I'd offer that, I'm glad to hear Brett, to talk to Wendy and then contact with her because we can be of help, I think.
Yes, sir.
Just along the lines of what he was saying, it being an integrated problem, the draft supplemental generic environmental impact statement?
Yes.
Right? I've been through it and it's very good point by point. There is an air quality model in there, but the real thread from it is the water quality. Why isn't there a water quality model? Why aren't the flood planes more representative? You know, they date back to the nineties.
When you say there's not a water quality component?
A water quality model that says if we're going to build all these things and the runoff's going to change and we're going to store it here and we're going to store it there, why isn't there something that integrates that together along...
No, I don't know what reason.
DEC is still taking comments on that.
Yeah, you know, you should actually...
I didn't send them.
You should send them.
I'm sending them regularly.
Because comments are coming in, there's thousands of comments coming in, obviously people have questions like that. I think that's a good point.
Well, it just doesn't, it seems like they've done very good point, but there's a huge impact when you do certain things here.
Okay. You should send something in because they take...
I have.
When the comments come in, they take them very seriously and they actually spin them off to experts. The first set of comments to prepare this report, one of the reasons that it took so long is they went outside of the department. We spend a lot of money to make sure, because again, you know, I want to emphasize this, we want to do it in an environmentally safe manner. We want to look at, we don't want to do anything that's going to contaminate anything. And certainly people are going to continue to have their points of view. I respect that, but you need to send in your thoughts and they'll be looked at very seriously.
Well, I've had the wells come through by my house twice before. They're coming through the drain now. It's definitely changed my area.
Sure.
And I need, I agree, if you can figure out an environmentally safe, but I don't think they've looked through it, and from what I've read of that thing, there's a heck of a lot of risk. There's a heck of a lot of risk. I don't understand the big rush. The commissioner, the DEC commissioner, said, he got asked, why there wasn't a delay in the response to the comments coming back, and he said, and it was attributable to the floodwater.
Sure.
And he said on September 7th, they did grant the delay, but September 7th is when the rain started. I don't understand that. He doesn't even know what's going on here, and we're the prime region that they're going after.
All right, we'll bring that up.
Need more time.
Look, we need to consider, they've gone in sixteen hundred wells over thirty years? Sixteen hundred wells?
Sixty thousand.
Yeah, well, it's every year they're averaging sixteen hundred wells, and I can tell you, it does affect your house. It affects your house, it affects your road. I'm not saying it's bad or good, but I'd like to think that somebody's at least thinking it through and isn't just worried about, who's making what money.
Well, listen, let me address that. I sit on an advisory panel that's made up of environmentalists, most of them.
Well, I know you're on the advisory, and actually, that's what I wrote up on there. I'd like to talk to you.
And we're going through everything, we're looking at the comments. Again, there's risks to any business. There's risks for every one of us who go out here and drive a car tonight. I just think that we'll do it in the right manner, we'll do it environmentally safe. We're not going to go Wild, Wild West like they did in Pennsylvania because they did Go Wild, Wild West, you know, and I think we just have to take it, your points about the floods and what have you in this region make a lot of sense, and it needs to be seriously looked at. But again, there's going to be people in favor, there's going to be people against. And here's the last question of the evening. How's that? Say your best relax.
Since you mentioned your role on the advisory panel.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the missions of the advisory panel is to determine the fee structure or the revenue stream.
That's right.
That would be needed, excuse me, to provide the oversight for this industry. So certainly oversight is required, it's going to cost some money. At all the level of our current tax structure is the ad verum structure, and it would bring in to the local community the taxation on gas production. Hopefully, the solution that would be proposed by the panel would be something that would not eliminate the local ad verum taxation on those gas production.
Let me say this, you know, when we brought Tyga Downs to town, there were people for and against it. There were people who didn't believe in gambling, they thought it was bad, and I respect that. There were people that were concerned about, not much environmentally, but they were concerned about the distribution of wealth. We then negotiated the opportunity for the county to get a percentage of the profits and the Town of Nichols to get a percentage of the profits, and that's worked quite successfully since we've opened it. Unfortunately, Governor Patterson cut them in half. We reinstituted them a little bit, but there's still decent revenue stream coming to both the county and into the Town of Nichols. As a matter of fact, people in the Town of Nichols, I think, are quite happy. I'm not sure if taxes have gone up at all since Tyga Downs has been there, or they might have gone down even. When I brought Jeff Guarrell to town, he was from New York City and everybody got nervous. They thought he was one of these, another New York City shrewd business people. I met with him several times and I trusted him. He seemed to be a man of his word, and I checked him out. He has a billion dollars worth of real estate in New York City, he and his father, in New Mark Realty, one of the largest real estate holdings in New York City. So I checked him out with people that I knew. He then went on to tell me that his mother was from Binghamton, so coming up here was kind of nice to do something and what have you. He has since, and I'm getting to a point, I'm not, just so that you know the way I operate, he has since done a number of things for the town during the flood. Marty, what did he do? Seventy-five thousand dollars to the county. He did twenty-five thousand to Chow and Groom County. I was with him last night, actually, I was in New York City last night because I had to have a treatment this morning at Sloan, and when we got all done, we talked for about a half hour, and he asked me, "Is there anything else that I can do?" Set up a fund. He said, "I'm still concerned about people in Tyga County that have no place to go." And I said, "You know what, Jeff? Let me get back to you because I'm trying to make sure that money doesn't go to places that we never see it." That's why I know like in Groom County, Chow is bankrupt, literally, the food bank is bankrupt and the food comes out as soon as it comes in. So when we get to the permitting process, there are going to be large profits made by these companies, goes back to what this lady said about, you know, environmental standards. We need to hold them to the standards in making sure that whatever fee structure, I don't like to use the word tax, but whatever fee structure we use, and we have to come up with a fee structure. I'd rather not nickel and dime them to death. I'd rather come up with a good structure that's going to either talk about, you know, extraction costs, other things, and there has to be, I'm going to fight very hard to make sure that there's some payback, just like we did with Racino, to the local governments. Roads and bridges are critical, I hear that all the time, absolutely. You know, I want the roads to look better when they start drilling than they do now. And, you know, I have continuing meetings with a number of people in the industry, and I will tell you this, sometimes those meetings aren't fun because I get on them, you know? I don't own one acre of land that's going to be drilled on, for the record, by the way. I just truly believe that this region needs some economic hope because, you know what? I've had the honor of serving you for the last twenty-five years, and we've brought businesses in, and I've flown in airplanes with big shots to go down and talk to corporate in, and I've flown in airplanes with big shots to go down and talk to corporate executives to come here. I haven't been in an airplane to go talk to...goes back to your point, sir, a corporate executive in quite some time, because nobody wants to come to upstate...it's not just here to upstate New York. And that's why I said earlier, that's why we started with the tax structure. That's why, you know, I'm very pleased with Governor Cuomo. No taxes this year, I don't want to do any taxes next year. Now, we've got some type of station, we've got to figure out how to get through that, because there's costs that are involved. You know, natural disasters, you can't ever estimate, you can't ever predict. So we're trying to do the right thing. So when this permitting process begins, and I believe it's going to begin, I don't know when, I believe it's going to begin, I will assure you, and I'm not going to sit here and pretend that there might not...there might be an accident. G E polluted the Hudson River. General Electric, right? An environmentally sound company, they polluted the hell out of the Hudson River, okay? I didn't hear as much argument about that as I do about natural gas drilling. They cleaned it up, thank God, but for a long time, it was a problem. And certainly, what happened in the Gulf was not pretty. That was horrible, what happened there. So we have to do the best we can to make sure that this moves forward in a very positive way, and they'll pay their way. Now, I said that that was the last question, but I'm going to cheat. Go ahead, you want to say something?
I do.
Go ahead.
Can you help us as far as the fracking wastewater coming to New York State presently in municipal wastewater treatment plants being filtered through them, and the wastewater treatment plants do not have the capability, especially with the radium 226 and all that, and it's going into our waters, and there's a lot of people that drink...
Where is New York State? Are they processing in New York State? Ma'am, I don't think they're processing...we're not doing it. We don't have any facility in New York State that can do it.
Yeah, yeah. Auburn was doing it, and Sherburne, Mike still be doing it, Sherburne, New York.
Really?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, I'll check you, but I'm not aware of it.
The other thing that is concerns a lot, concerns me as well.
See, and I'm almost...I don't mean that...I'm almost definitely sure it's not being done, but I just...but actually, this is a lot of the misinformation that's out there.
They're spreading it on the roads.
They're spreading from the brine. They're taking from the gas drilling from Pennsylvania, and they make it into like a spray, and they can only put the spray down like a many minutes before the snowfalls and like that, and they can put it on dusty roads for dust control. But what happens is the radium from the gas drilling wastewater...
It's production water from P.A.
Yeah, and I don't think a lot of citizens are...
Not water.
And from P.A., and they're bringing it into New York.
You betcha.
...leukemia and cancer. It'll take you 10 years. So you have 10 years to enjoy your life before you'll get the cancer, you know, and leukemia. So that's the good news, 10 years. But it's kind of serious.
Okay, let me end by saying this. Thank you for coming, and let's go through a couple of points real quick. If we told you to go back after FEMA, please do, okay? And as Dick said, just go after them and just keep hitting them, number one. Number two, the insurance numbers, do that, give it some time, come back to us if you can, we'll do whatever we can. What I will do on my end in the immediate, I'm going to get on our congressional representatives and find out what's going on with trailers, and I'll do that tomorrow and see where we can't get something moving there. What else do I need to do? We got a list for you. All right.
How do we get the answers to all this?
How do you get the answers to all this? That's a fair question. Okay, my website is tomlivis.com.
He gave us their email. We'll put them on a list.
Okay. Couple ways. TomLivis.com, I hope it's pretty informative. Staff spends a lot of time putting information on it. And we made it tomlivis.com so it'd be easier for me to remember. And those of you watching, tomlivis.com for information.
Vote for Tom.
He'll wipe that out. But we'll do that. If you give us your email addresses, we'll let you know. Okay, usually, and I know you said you came in from another state, and...
No, I didn't.